Welcome everyone to the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District, bring of the meeting. We have to amend the agenda, please. We have another nomination form that we would add to our consent agenda. So I would entertain a motion, please, to amend the consent agenda with the addition of one more nomination.
One more.
Excellent. Do we have a second? Jeff, thank you for that. So the first and second to amend the consent agenda as noted. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We have amended our agenda. So the first item of the pledge of allegiance, I would invite folks who wish to rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we've opened the floor for public comment. We have the item two. I see the only other member that we have present is Mary Ellen. So if you'd like to say something, you can certainly have the floor.
Just to say, obviously, the end of a new school year, this past week, some folks from Bennington Cares were over at Molly Stark and cleaned out the trail that's in the school so that it's now looking really beautiful and fully usable. So that's really a good thing. For the coming school year, we're going to be meeting with the principals during the summer. Our next sort of project is to respond to their need or desire for having more adults from the community available to be in the schools. As for sort of, you know, friendly people who can be there interacting with the teachers and the students, it's a little bit of a heavy lift, but we're hoping that if we plan together during the summer, that will have some good ideas after going into the fall. And the other little thing is that last year at the Juneteenth celebration that the school district sponsored, Bennington Cares began a project which was based on the Gee's Bend quilters, who are a group of African-American women from back in the 1800s and going through to today. We've done these remarkable abstract design quilts that are now in museums like all over the world. And we began a project based on that where people could make a square in sort of the spirit of Gee's Bend. And we're putting it together into a community quilt. And so we have, so it's over 60 squares now that were done at different community events, starting last year at Juneteenth. And at this year's Juneteenth, we'll be showing the quilt as fully put together. And then it's going to go up to the museum for a while so that people can go see their squares if they wish. So a little update on Bennington Cares.
Great. Thanks very much. And really thank you for all the work you've done of the course this year. It's really been wonderful. Thanks to the whole organization. Superintendent Colkeen, is there anyone online available with a mic off the public comment?
There's, I see no one other than Cat, Richard.
Okay, thanks. So now we're going to move into our consent agenda, agenda item three. The consent agenda is attached to the other agenda. And again, we have the addition of the nomination form for Jennifer Dunham for a fifth grade teacher position at Molly Stark. So first of all, any, I'll ask, I know there is one amendment to be made to the minutes. You know that Chriselle was not present, but she was. So I'd like to see that. Like, I would entertain a motion to modify the minutes in a way to reflect that attendance, please. Thanks, Sandy. Do you have a second on that? Thanks. Any discussion on amending the minutes to reflect that Chriselle wasn't here? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of amending the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, and actually, that reminds me, Richard had asked that we announce who was in the room. I think we have all of our board members in the room. Is there a short anyone today?
Cindy.
Cindy, thank you. So, so Richard, all board members are present except for Cindy Brownell. We also have Mary Ellen Monley from Bennington Cares, Mr. Superintendent Colkeen, and we have Jennifer, whose last name I don't know. I don't remember. She was also a superintendent in the Commonwealth. So with that amendment made to minutes, any additional conversation, any proposed amendments to the consent agenda? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Motion?
Yes, please. Thanks, Sandy. Thanks, Glenn. Any discussion about the consent agenda period? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, there you go. That carries. The operations, although it's noted on the agenda, there's nothing to report out. So that brings us to agenda item five, which is finance. The treasury report, it was not posted as of this morning, I don't believe. It may have been posted later on this afternoon. Superintendent Colkeen, do you have, just one second. Yeah, Jeff. Never mind. I'll be quiet. Okay. All right, misread something. Fair enough. Did anyone happen to see if the treasury report was posted this afternoon? Okay, all right. So we'll have to take that up during advisement in August. So that brings us to agenda item six, policies.
I define it as I will pass the warrant.
All right, so looking at our packets, we have two, one policy to adopt, which is at this point, it's draft policy 6100 regarding library material selection. And then we have to, we have the replacement of a policy 001. So let's first take a look at 6100. Let me pull it up here. So this has made the rounds. It came to us back in April. Any discussion about this policy as it was posted in the agenda? Okay, great.
Yeah, I do have a question about, so just in terms of, you know, kind of ultimately things going to the criteria of the superintendent.
Is that, is that the American Library Association stuff or where is that criteria kind of articulated, if that makes sense? So if you're looking at, you're referring to line 15, the superintendent shall establish guidelines?
Yeah.
It's similar to administrative regulations for other policies. So we will form a committee, probably of the librarians, who will then draft recommendations for superintendent on what this criteria would be. Usually we do the policy first and then, because this could get changed as it goes around to the practice and then
we have eyeballs on that criteria. We have any, does it have criteria or no?
So I don't know, is necessarily a process of approving it, but the admin, the administrative regulations for each policy ought to come before the board to be more aware.
My own concern with, I think the board just provides on this. If it were the other boards, you would admit reading materials in school. I respect Jim's choices, but if there's something being excluded, I mean, I'd like to have a proper to the board's intention. You know.
So is the request, I just want to make sure.
And I guess top here is, if you look down south, especially at, you know, getting rid of a lot of the transgender books in school, you know, that limitation, like, we're not going to have these in the school library. You know, I mean, as a board member, I do, you know, if there's something that Jim flags as a topic of concern, I think us as a board should really look at that flag.
So let me just think, think out how crack that would be.
We could ban books as a board anytime.
Yeah.
That's what they do all over the country.
Yeah.
And I don't want to be there for the same banned books, but if there's something that should be limited, I think us as a board should have discussion on that.
So, but you're saying, you're suggesting if the superintendent makes topics
Topic.
Off, off limits, those top, that that should be reviewed by the board. You're not saying that's simply because something is not selected for a library.
Yeah, if he says, you know, we're not going to get book X, Y, and Z, you know, if he's a limited topic, I think we should have this discussion. I don't think he's going to do that, but I think it would be nice to have that as a board oversight.
So I, my, so because that's sort of, because I think what you're talking about would fall under the the equivalent of administrative regulations for this, I think we would have that level of oversight anyway on it. But do other, do other people see like a loophole that I'm not articulating?
I think it would be nice to have some transparency. I would say even beyond the topic area, but like, nothing, just a place where we're able to see, to be able to see the books that are coming in, see the books that are being challenged by the community and maybe those that are being kind of upheld. It would be, I think, something that would be great to be able to, for us to be able to track over time.
Yeah, so I, so when I hear you say that regard, like, part of me thinks that if, if the public were to, you know, members of the public were to object to books that were in the library, that would technically fall under plans of war. And so we would see those. I mean, I guess I'm, I'm of two minds on this. One, my thought is like, hey, look at this great board we have. I don't think we have to worry about burning books or banning books necessarily, but then understanding, of course, like, policies stick around. Who knows what next year, two years, or five years could look like.
And I mean, Jim said be here two years.
Yeah.
You know, so it could change based on superintendent. So I want to make sure at least that, you know.
Which is kind of what I was getting at in terms of like, to know what like, what the criteria of that are going to be.
The note I put on this is that when the draft of the criteria is concluded, it would make a round back, at least go to the policy committee and then there's no reason not to share that.
Yeah. Yeah. So are folks feeling okay that that would be the process for reviewing if anything was banned or outlawed from the schools?
So if I understand you correctly, it's going to be in the admin reg piece?
I'm not. It would be a similar process to how we draft it. The superintendent doesn't sit by themselves and draft admin regs. Like with the the cellphone policy, when there's a committee now of the administrative teachers who are drafting with those, admin regs will draft them and come back to the superintendent. So I, I would imagine with this, this probably already criteria from a previous policy, but we'll have our school librarians and an administrator sit and draft what that criteria would be and it would be presented to me. And I, there's no reason not to share that.
It's already in there that there's some plank will go library and it works its way up the food chain to us.
Yeah. So. If someone was complaining about some material that we had on our board, I imagine it would go to the board.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to adopt 6100. Thanks, Jeff. Any further discussion? We need a second. Okay, thanks. Any further discussion on 6100?
That this will be cleaned up.
In terms of the visualization and the highlights, that's to draw our attention to the pieces that are being changed.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we have our first, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, adopting 6100, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, that carries. Next is 4100, which we discussed. Four zero.
Yeah.
Sorry, four zero zero one, which we had discussed, I think, also back in April. This replaces what can extend policy with some updated language and some updated procedures. So I would entertain, I did things slightly earlier last time. First, I would entertain a motion to approve 4001. Thanks, Glenn. Sandy has a second. Now, any conversation about 4001? Okay. All right, very good. So hearing no discussion, all those in favor of 4001, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Great, that carries. So that brings us through to agenda item seven. So I'm not sure, I don't know which of our temporary representatives to SPSU attended the last meeting, so I don't afford either of those. Do give us the rundown, please. I wonder if either of our.
At this end of, this end of the year, I was there and I just don't have the recollection.
Okay, I knew you said it was the best meeting you've ever done.
We can feast together.
Okay.
The agenda I can tell you about.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so that brings us then to the agenda. Which is superintendent's report. So Superintendent Colkeen, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have in your packet the report from the New England School Development Council. This, we contracted with them back in the fall to do a best educational use of school facility study. It is a lengthy report. It has a lot of information, particularly about our schools, staffing levels, what's in each school. It also has recommendations or options. This report is intended to begin discussion. There's no answers in this report. What do I recommend that we do with this? I think you should form an ad hoc committee, similar to what MAU had to study Spinelli Field. And you appoint, and that committee was made up, and give them a time charge to review this and come back with recommendations, which could be like, it's great information, thanks, we don't want to do anything, or let's study this option, or that option, or reject this option. What are some of the options in, some of the things it talks about? For as long as I've been here, and for those of you, probably as long as since the middle school was built, should all sixth graders be at the middle school? That option comes back on the table now that you're a unified board, where it was up to individual boards before that. Controversial, because but we should once and for all review it and decide. The report says there is enough room at the middle school to do it, that middle school might disagree. And we also have cross-board issues like that is the MAU board. So we may feel that all sixth graders should go, but the MAU board may feel differently. We do get occasional requests from students from, just so people who may not be listening, who may be listening at home may not know this. Bennington sends their sixth graders to the middle school, none of the other school. Schools do, they educate Shasbury, Pommel, Woodford. That's it, that's it.
Because that was always the case.
I don't.
I don't know.
Since, since MAU was formed, yeah.
Since MAU was formed, yes, which was 20 years ago, right? So, you know, I hear from community members occasionally that it was built for enough students to do it. Why aren't you doing it? So let's, let's have that discussion. The other controversial is all revolves around Woodford Elementary School. Do you continue to operate that school? Let's make a decision whether we do or not, right? There's, you have the highest per pupil operating costs for that school of any other school. I'm told in the state of Vermont, I don't know if that's true, but certainly within our district. There's pros and cons to every one of these in here. Transportation, closing a historically significant school. And I'm not looking to stotify or, you know, ignite controversy, because there are lots of pluses for keeping it operating too. But let's have that, let's have that discussion. Because it also is a building that's going to need some significant maintenance going forward. So, and then what else? Do we continue to operate our all our elementary schools with the same grade configuration? Or should we be designating one of these schools to be a true early education center, like a pre-K through one, that you can concentrate all the resources in one building? What does that change? You know, your, your community school, like, not every student from Shasbury would go to first grade in Shasbury. They may go somewhere else. Cons, that, right, you, the student would have to change to at least one additional school during their educational career and transportation cost would probably go up too. But there are advantages. So what do I mean by an ad hoc committee? What we did with Spinelli, we appointed two board members. We asked for two teachers, two administrators, and two community members or parents jointly appointed by the chair and the superintendent. And then they were given, we actually will draft a charge of what they would focus their study on. And I can get a draft of that, you know, for us when we meet next time, which probably won't be August. Have that committee formed, give them at least six months to at least come back with initial review. We found with the Spinelli Field, the two-two-and-two worked well, that no one group over-influenced another. But I'm open to the suggestions of this committee of how they went. But I think that's the best way to do this, to take a long, deep dive into it, reviewing everything and come back. And this is all designed to encourage thoughtful conversation and discussion. Not, and, and if nothing comes out of it, other than we had that discussion and said that we like operating just the way we are, that's fine, but we've done our due diligence and looked at it.
Jim, would you say we would draft the charge? Who's the we?
I could draft, I did for Spinelli Community, but I could draft it and bring it back to, to, to the board, send it all up to the board. I will save, just to give you an idea of what the charge would sound like. So the charge to the ad hoc committee before was to review the Spinelli Field, so we said to review the NESTC study prepared by, the study prepared by NESTC. The work includes but not limited, meeting with representatives, meeting with administrators, meeting, like, everybody who might be impacted by this. It's give the, the ad hoc committee will begin work no later than a start date and report out to the Union Elementary Board no later than a completion date. During the operating period, the ad hoc committee, all questions should refer to the superintendent's office. The ad hoc committee should appoint a chair and vice chair and conduct their meetings following Robert's rule of order. All ad hoc committee meetings will follow non-public open meeting requirements. All ad hoc, ad hoc committee will be warranted, posted on the SPSU website. And the ad hoc committee's role is advisory to the Union Elementary Board. And it will conclude its work and dissolve when the report is re-pented to the school. Pretty, we take that and redefine.
And do you have sort of an ideal timeline in mind?
Well, we don't typically meet in July, and I, I hope that we don't. So, you know, August, maybe we could find a gender of appointing the members and begin their work when school returns. Because basically we're going to include teachers, it would be more like, and ask for progress reports and set a, set a, like, maybe December 1st is too aggressive with how meetings go, but maybe by whatever, you know, we, it's six, give them six months to do it.
Okay.
And, but if they could give progress reports or come back with questions, or they want clarification, so.
Good.
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
This report, I thought was designed to utilize the buildings. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so this isn't the impact of learning for the educational side as much as it is the facility.
It's not, no, it, it, I would, it talks about, you know, it talks about staffing, it talks about space for that staffing, which is, impacts the educational delivery from each building. So, and it does talk about, so best use facilities, it's in just the physical condition of it. But as I said, should grade, grade alignment change in those buildings? So was there enough space to do that? As soon as you bite into this and look, it'll, it'll snap, censor it to you. Everything Jim said about how it could possibly affect movie trades and stuff because of the physical plant of the building. Not necessarily all based on education and instruction, but you know, that could come out of this, that committee.
And it specifically limited stakeholder input, because it wanted to be sort of a dispassionate look at things, like, here, here, here is what we have to work with. What's the best way to use this?
So more physical, more physical.
Yes, yes.
But to talk.
But to open conversation.
Open conversation. It, it really, you know, gives options, but it doesn't give direction. It really is to design, encourage us and our partners to have a conversation.
I don't want to do this quickly, but two questions. First, option four is your ad hoc committee, right? Like, that's, that's what, that's just to be clear on that.
Yeah.
What are the pros and cons of the status quo? Were, were those articulated somewhere, like, of staying the same? Given that, like, a lot of stuff talked about, population projections, that stuff trending down, you know, so, you know, so this isn't necessarily, we're looking at like, oh, no, like, we're looking.
It shows that we're not going to have a boom in population that we have to build for.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know, but I understand your question. Does it?
Well, yeah, you know, if I were on that, I mean, if I were on the ad hoc committee, I'd love to be, you know, that'd be really interesting. But just thinking about, you know, taking an option four off, because that's the ad hoc committee that's looking at the three other options.
Yeah.
A fourth option would be things staying as they are.
Absolutely.
And so like, what, I mean, I'm just wondering what, if there were advantages or disadvantages expressed about that.
I don't think there was, but just thinking, leaving the way, leaving this the way it is. But let me say this about the ad hoc committee, and, you know, the chair gets that global responsibility of selecting two people that, when there's probably more than that. But what we found with Spinelli Field, you know, there was great interest in it. And that's why they're all public meetings and anybody can attend, any board member can attend. But the ones who would vote on whatever recommendation would be the two that are there with the other community partners. Because what we have to be careful of is that we don't create a quorum at this. I don't know if that answered, I mean, I, I think, you know, there is always possibility, we're going to come out of this, that the recommendation would be is, thank you for that information, but we're going to, we're going to stay the way it is. And that's fine if we had a thoughtful conversation involving all stakeholders and, and, and take, take a look at however. We should, we've been operating this way a long time, and we, we, we should look and see, is this still the best way to deliver education here in the superclassory union?
I feel like even with the Act 46, you know, is the Woodford was always on the, you know, discussion board as well. We hope this way we keep it open. So we've had these discussions before in different realms. And it goes back to when Catamount was closed, what do you do with all the kids? It's been top on the community in the past, so. Be interested.
For clarification purposes, so there would be two appointed board members, two teachers, and that's it, right?
Two administrators, two administrators and two community or parents. In its entirety, not per board.
Yeah.
No, I mean, you, this is having a part of this discussion. If you ever went with the option that you're moving all sixth graders, then we would, we'd have a discussion with that, maybe.
Well, so I, I like this idea of putting together the ad hoc committee. Any, are there any, anyone think that that's not a good idea?
I, I agree with you. I just hope that we would do some kind of survey to the community so that at some point we would get input.
So the ad hoc committee for Spinelli Field did exactly those types of things. So there's nothing that the ad hoc committee can't do or, or I hope that they does do it more. They may do, decide they want to do site tours and see what, they may want to go visit, what really is an early childhood center at a, at a school district that does have that type of facility. So we would certainly encourage that. And that's why it's, the timeline, you know, with, the difference with this versus Spinelli Field that had a tighter timeline is, they were trying to get something done before it was going to have to go to vote, right? There is no timeline on this. I think as long as we're showing progress and moving forward, our problem, you know, moving the timeline forward or even saying, take a year to study it. It's a different, you know, different outcome at this versus, we had a project, a designated project that they were trying to move forward for approval. This is much more deep-up study for what it may indicate.
In terms of the administrators, I mean, one person that I think is going to be essential would be Director Anderson to sit on this.
Yeah. She was, she was deeply involved with meeting with NESTC and their tours of the building and media principals. So who really were involved was every building principal and Director Anderson were involved, and myself, but.
Would Director Anderson, can we, can you guarantee that she would be a part of this?
And then probably a principal too.
Okay.
Yeah.
How are the parents decided?
Well, I mean, so, so it says how it was for the ad hoc, that we advertised it, we're looking, looking for parents to do it. And then it was a joint selection by the chair and the superintendent, which I think we ended up doing a lottery, because we had more than two.
And when we had the, when we had the Act 46 study committee, we did something similar to this. We solicited community input, community stakeholders to sit on that, that study committee. And as I recall, we, we solicited letters of interest and then the board voted on which of those letters to take in. It wasn't a lottery, it was a, it was a potential selection.
And it would seem, and I don't know if this is possible, that maybe one of the outlying principals of the three schools that it could be impacted, their sixth graders might be asked if they would.
Well, I would imagine the second administrator would be one of the principals, yeah.
One of, I mean, one of the, Pommel would be. One of, I mean, one of the panel would be, were non-Bennington school principals. Because they want some of the, have more say about the sixth graders moving.
Well, the sixth graders, but the other things in fact.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate assigning a principal, or do you anticipate? Asking who's that?
I will, I will ask who's interested, just as you will ask which board members are interested.
Okay.
I'll select one.
So this, I mean, to me, that sounds like a way to go, again, even if it results in no change at all, at least it's been done in a thoughtful way, and it's not just that it's unusual because of the.
You say, we did $27,000 for this, so. I don't want to see it sit on the show.
Right, right.
If anything, refer back to it for later on, we've gotten this done, right? Sorry, I said, and if anything, if nothing changes, then if we wanted to relook at it in the future, we have it.
Right.
And we can redo that again, right?
What's really telling when you read this and you look at the physical descriptions and age of our buildings?
Yes.
Your audience had their hand up.
Please.
Yeah, please.
When, how can it publicly become aware of the report, its purpose, and what the purpose of this ad hoc committee is? I've been schooled in how to get to the materials, I have to confess, I couldn't find the packet for today's meeting. I just couldn't find it, and, um, so I haven't been, been up to date, and so there is a bit of a gap there in communication.
So after tonight's meeting, we will put this on our website, but I wanted to present it to the board first. And it'll also be out of the minutes from tonight's meeting too, so.
And so, although I was not part of the Spennelli Field, so I can speak to that, I, I was, I was on the board and we, developed the Act 46 study committee for the community, and what we did was, it was a combination of, notifications sent to, sent home to parents through the schools, it was social media blast, it was in the newspaper, and through those three things, I don't know, we garnered.
I think the big problem is, is if you haven't been taught how to find the information website is, you know, sometimes I go through them, like I can't find it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so my hope is that.
How much information is really on, and everybody wants their information on the front page.
Yeah, right.
And only, and I, as I talk with our tech department, they tell me like I can only have so many tiles.
It would be nice to have a hyperlink by the, or just.
Sure.
Asterisk, here's the packet, isn't it? It's pretty detailed packet.
I also like to make the request that you consider in terms of who's going to be on the ad hoc, like, yes, you have the administrators and the teachers and the, and the parents. I'd like to consider that there might be a community group as well, or just community member.
Yeah, I don't oppose, I mean, if, well, it says, for, for Spennelli, they had a parent and a community, that was one on one, but, I'm not married to that. If you want to do two parents and two community members, that's.
That would be my suggestion for you to consider, because they have different perspectives, and the notion of the whole of the community caring about the school.
Suppose that we're looking for community members and parents. Send a note to the superintendent's office or an email to the superintendent's office that you're interested, and then I'll let you know when we have enough.
Yeah, and we, we can figure that out, we can, yeah. I don't, Chriselle. I think that's a bad, so we go from, eight to 10?
My other question was, would there be, I guess in one of the announcements and equi, one of the announcements having equitable access for those who do not have internet, I know that sounds silly, but some people don't have internet, is there going to be a way that they can access that form too?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, again, I would think, uh, notifications going out through the schools and in the newspaper.
It'll be in our newsletter, and our newsletter is also a podcast as well as.
Yeah.
And we also do print versions of it and, and get distributed at different points in the community.
Yeah, we could ask that it go up to the town office, town office hangs our agendas anyway, so.
The libraries.
The libraries too.
Yeah.
Our newsletter goes to the library, and it will be in the newsletter once.
Somebody come here and request a copy, Jim, if they came to the office.
We have copies available.
Yeah, so they come here and request it as well.
Well, I don't believe anybody ever has, but.
It's small, it's a matter of interest if that person wants. And maybe we can do all the places where we physically are required to post our meeting notice, our meeting notices, maybe that's.
We can put something up just like we're doing a meeting, yes, and soliciting.
Yeah.
Do a hard copy at those locations, and if they give it out, the office, that's another one.
Okay, um, so I think we've ironed out what this is going to look like, we just need to agree with a vote that this is what we're going to do. So, all, all those in favor of, of creating an ad hoc committee as described? First of all, I need a motion for that.
So I have another motion.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, thanks, Chriselle, are you second? Okay, second from Chriselle. Any further discussion about?
So that's just, you know, down the, the committee.
So, and I, so I think what you're moving is this, an ad hoc committee to study the effective use of our school buildings, comprised of two board members, two teachers, two administrators, two community members, and two parents.
Yeah, and can those community members be parents as well, for example? I feel like if we're going to open that door, it should be seven.
Right, because that's why it was written for this Spennelli that a community are a parent, but you know, how to, because then if we throw the balance off.
Two parents and then two community members.
What if they were a parent last year, but they're not a parent this year?
No. I jumped there, I think of our school choice question, that's, that's the question I gave them last week.
Now, are we going to ask for, you're assuming honest about that, are we going to ask for just?
We know. Yeah, parents are.
So we'll hook up, so we're making all of the parents, the community members.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kids out there, graduated out of school, that's, counts as a community member.
Yes.
Graduated this year, yes.
Yeah, yeah, because what's different here, now, Spennelli Field had a student member on the committee. One from the middle school, one from the high school, one from first step, but we have significantly younger students here, so I left it off that part, so. So we have some very, very gifted and talented teenagers, I'm sure.
Okay, great, so there's our motion. Chriselle, you want to second that motion that we put more detail to? Great, any further discussion on that? Hearing now, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, in that case, in the next week or so, folks can let me know if they are interested in, in serving on this committee, you can shoot me an email to a place.
I think our attendance starts the start of the school year.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, but still, I would encourage all board members.
If we can form the committee at our August meeting and then give them their charge.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, but, but even if you, even if board members don't have an interest in serving on this ad hoc committee, I would encourage you to really dive into the report. It is likely, but I think it's worth it, there's some, there's some real nuggets to pull out of it, for sure.
Can we always share our thoughts with the ad hoc?
That's why they're public meetings and they're warned, there's a public meeting, so that, uh, anyone can go, they'll have public comment period on their agenda, just like our meetings.
Yeah, because I'm sure that, just like Spennelli, there's going to be a lot of public interest in this.
Yeah.
That they're going to want to have their voices heard. We should, we should hear those. Yeah, so great, yeah, so within the week-ish, you know, folks will let me know, and then I'll, I'll, I'll let everyone know, and then Superintendent Kellie will let you know as well.
Okay.
Superintendent, one more item that I want to talk to you.
Sure, let this, before we close the book on this piece, but, uh, your office will be overseeing, but it may be outreach.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Hey, don't forget that. You received an email from me yesterday that the last day of school for Bennington Elementary is tomorrow for students. The construction, I, I want to thank the staff for what they have put up to get to this point with the elevated construction. As I told it yesterday morning and listened to hammer drills going through the wall, um, you know, it, it's proved challenging. It's not just the elevator, like, the, the school is going to have some major, hopefully we, it'll all be done by the fall and maybe we can have a tour. And the lockers are coming out, and that, those, where the lockers are, they did one test site already. All new sheet rock in there, painted a bright primary school color. There's new flooring going in that will be much brighter than the concrete that was there, but the concrete was an improvement over the very dirty.
Decade old.
So I made the decision to, uh, similar to like calling a snow day, I'm sending the students home two days early. Staff will be in the building on Thursday and Friday, but on Monday and Tuesday, the staff for that school, that school only will be working remotely, because the construction is going to kick in. Uh, you know, when we do our monthly meetings with the union, uh, you know, they have brought this to our attention about how difficult it is to teach there with all this going on. And to stand the timeline for, and this was, the, uh, the elevator is funded by SRO funds that had to be spent by a certain date. And the contractor plates that, and, and we're going to be right up against that deadline, so if I, if I, withheld, and the contractor, Paulie met with the contractor and explained that we keep the, the hammer drilling to like before school and after school, and they, it did improve. I was told by staff members that it was still a lot of noise, a lot of, uh, some encroachment by students into the construction zone, even though there's fencing. So, uh, they will, what's important to understand, they still will hit the 175 there, find the ox and do 176 days. So, you know, we're not in violation of, uh, the requirements for going to school. And again, I, you know, I thank the staff, students, and family for what they're putting up to make a, a better school. That will have, for the first time ever, access to the second floor of that building for everyone. And hopefully a brighter, cleaner environment when it's all done, so I'm kind of excited for it. But when you look and see in this report that that building opened in 1950, it's, uh, it's amazing. You know, it's an inadequate facility, but it's the one that we have, and I don't see us getting a new one anytime soon, so this work is important to go on. That's my report.
Thanks. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, great, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to the chair report, we have a couple of business, pieces of business here, one is noted, the election of SBSU, SBSU reps. The other regards some of our committees, uh, so, at our reorganization meeting, because at that point we had vacancies for the board, we decided to, uh, appoint on a pro temp basis, our SBSU reps, but now that we have a nice full board, uh, now I think we can make a better selection amongst the members here. So Superintendent Kellie, just confirm for me, please, we get three SBSU reps?
Okay.
So, I, you don't need to go through a formal process of nomination, simply if you would like to be an SBSU rep, please at this point raise your hand. Three? So the, the, the role of the SBSU rep, that's a great question, so. So, obviously, this, this board is a member board of the wider supervisor, supervisor union. You know, it's, it's, in terms of time commitment, it's another meeting a month, uh, there are committees that, that take place there. Essentially, it's a way for this board to get the information of what's happening in a wider SBSU level, but also a way for this board to perform some of the business of the wider supervisor. That's my nutshell, and it's been years since I have been the SBSU rep, so, I'd like that's the three views.
As I'm already on through MAU, I know, you have to have a vote for this.
Oh, yes, oh, I know, yeah, right. Uh, but is there anything key that I'm missing in describing?
Another budget, which is, there are budget decisions that hold another, kind of.
Yeah, so, yeah, because there are a lot of employees, even though they may work in the elementary buildings, they're not, they're not our employees or the supervisor. Especially I did in particular, but they're others as well.
It's the whole SU as a whole.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else key that I'm missing in terms of what the SBSU reps do?
Or a rep, sorry, you two.
No, I'm on through MAU, I'm on the MAU board as well, so that's.
Jeff and I wanted to, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And what's like membership, I mean, are you voting on things in the room, or you fly on the wall, or you, I mean, what's the?
They're, they're members, yeah.
Part of another.
Yeah, so basically like this board.
Yeah.
And it oversees the SBSU operations of the administration, special ed.
And there's a rep from each, uh, school.
Okay.
Yeah, every, every board that runs a school district gets three members, and the boards that don't operate a school district, North Bennington and Sandgate, get one member. So if we're operating three, there'd be none operating one.
So, we, I think I saw three hands, in terms of people who are interested in service, regardless of stuff, it's just a thing, you know, okay, all right. No, it's fine, it's fine. That is, okay, no, I, I, I see that. Uh, but thank you for asking the question. Um, so we have three, so I would entertain a motion to elect Sandy, Jeff, and Chriselle as the SBSU reps from this board. Thank you, right, so, yeah?
Oh, that's him.
Okay.
There's a first and a second there.
Okay, so we have first and second, any further discussion about electing those three as our SBSU reps? There are none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Great, thank you very much, thanks for the three. I should mention that the SBSU next meeting has been moved to Thursday, June 20th. It's normally the fourth Wednesday of the month, but, uh, we're going to lose a lot of people for vacation that last week of June, they're trying to get it before their time expires and things like that, so. It's going to be Thursday, the 20th. And the MAU meeting, for those who are interested, has been moved to Tuesday, the 17th, because Juneteenth is Wednesday, the 18th, so they're not going to meet on Juneteenth, so. MAU, Tuesday, June 17th, and the SBSU, Thursday, June 20th.
At the time?
Five thirty. Second favorite school meeting you have. And then we also have to make, formalize our appointments to the various committees, um, so Sandy has agreed, I think, I think she's agreed. As far as I'm concerned, she's agreed to sit on the policy committee, which is excellent, which is an SBSU. Yes.
I, I, yes. I love company.
So, I'm there already. Yep, yep. Uh, there is also a finance committee, which I've been, I tried to think back, Superintendent Kellie, I don't know that there has ever been a formally appointed.
We don't, we don't need to, I know MAU is doing away with it, because everybody comes to the budget committee meetings anyway, so.
Yeah. There's also a facilities meeting, uh, facilities committee, but again, that has been fairly, I think ever since Director Anderson took, took on the position, it has just done a wonderful job of that. There's been less and less of a reason for there to be a facilities committee. So I don't know that we necessarily need to assign there. Uh, we do have a food committee, a food services committee, uh, which I think meets three or four times a year.
I nominate Cindy.
Great, I think that's a great idea. In fact, any outstanding committee, uh, no, no, I wouldn't.
No, she knows, she knows. She called me and said that he would be willing to serve.
I can feel her watching right now.
Uh, is there anyone else who'd be interested in serving on the food service committee? Okay, great, so we, we can make, I can make that appointment, so I can officially appoint Cindy Brown on the food services committee. Uh, and because all of our contracts were recently negotiated, we don't have any of those facilities as well, so, so we're in good shape in terms of that. You know, it's, here we are at the, at the end of the school year, I think, some really important things happened this school year in terms of bringing out new administrators and new staff members, and I think, I think, our six elementary schools are in better shape now than they were at the beginning of this academic year. And that's from supports within the school, it's from supports from the community, it's supports coming from central office, uh, things have been really good, so I think we're on an uphill trajectory, and I'm very happy to say that. So thanks to all the, the teachers and the parents and the school staff, thanks to the administrators, thanks to all the parents, thanks to all the students, community members from the state, it'll happen.
Also, how many people step up to be in the temp positions still?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, so, yeah.
I would just really like to encourage the school district to see about how to get that message into the community. You know, if it's through the banner, if it's through Vermont Digger, if it's maybe had that not very good report out in Vermont Digger two years ago. I think the community would be delighted, and it's a very good story.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. Okay, so Agenda Item 10 is an FYI, again, there's a bunch of status support, we have, uh, few admin regs for two of our policies, very kind of controversial policies with this board, our dress code and concussion management policies, so the admin regs are there. So please do take a look, and any questions can be referred to our policy representative, Sandy Foster. Yes, and so that then brings us to an executive session, we have two executive sessions scheduled. One to, to enable us to discuss confidential, attorney-client communications. And then the other one is to discuss academic records, or suspension, or disbarment of students. And Superintendent Kellie, I don't think there's any business to be conducted in there, so anyone watching at home, Richard? Everyone can click off now, because once we come back from executive session, our only piece of business will be to adjourn.